Jerry used to write.
Okay. So, hey, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call this regularly scheduled board meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve? Assembly.
Sir.
All in favor? Aye. Second item is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve? Assembly.
Sir.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay. Board members, we have several recognitions tonight for this unparted meeting. And we've got a lot of people attending and joining us virtually. So, welcome everyone. And I will tell you, we invite you to stay with us the entire time, but we also know you may have homework and practices and other things. So, you're welcome to stay, and we understand if you're not able to. We're just going to start with Morgan Jones. And I see Morgan on the screen. And she has been recognized as the recipient of the 2020 Southern Business Education Association Secondary Business Teacher of the Year. And this comes on the heels of being the 2019 Alabama Business Education Teacher of the Year. And so, this award represents educators over a span of 12 states through the southeast. Morgan, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
This is an excellent award. So, what comes next now? Is it an international?
Um, I'm not sure. I know there is a national association, so we'll just have to see about that one as long as I know of. But I don't think there's an international one.
You are representing the schools well, and I really appreciate that. I mean, it goes without saying, to receive honors like that are prestigious. There are a lot of educators around that do the same thing. So, congratulations, Morgan.
Thank you so much.
All right. Our next recognitions are from the Academy of Craft Training. And this has been a particularly good year for the St. David Hills City Schools. We've been having students being recognized as Employees of the Month, and we have two more to add. David Sandoval Romero and Markell Thomas, who were both, I think, attending, or Markell's attending with us. And they were selected in the February Employees of the Month. Ms. Denton, I think, is joining us. Mark, would you mind commenting on what it takes to get one of these awards?
I'm sorry. So, students are selected once a month by their instructors and people at the craft academy. And they put in a lot of hard work, and they pass some tests. And then they're awarded with a tool from the industry that goes along with their craft and a donut, and they get displayed on the entrance hallway at the craft academy. So, I'm really, really proud of these kids.
And today, at award ceremony, several were recognized from craft for certification. So, what this initiative does is lead to certification. In this case, David's award was in building instruction, and Markell's was in excellence in building welding. So, this is a fantastic program, just to build that our students are being recognized at the level they are. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for joining us, Markell. All right. Our next recognition is from the Alabama HOSA Leadership Conference. And Hannah Peterson is our teacher slash nurse slash all things health science instructor at Best David Hills High School extraordinaire. And she's with us, and I want you to say a few words, if you would, about David for us. Hannah and David recently was honored for winning in the sports medicine category at the annual HOSA conference, which was a virtual conference. Hannah, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, it was a virtual conference that he had to do skills assessments on, so it was really impressive that he was able to do that virtually. And even more so, last year, he qualified for state and unfortunately didn't make it in the top six. And when he walked with his other teammates, he said that day that he was going to be number one the following year. And he has said it numerous times since then that he would be number one. And so, I think it really just speaks to his discipline and dedication to the one first place that I'm really proud of.
That's awesome. David, congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have a career in mind that's related to health science?
Surgery. I like trauma. I'm 100% positive as of now, though.
That sounds great. I want to tell you, board members, and again, Morgan and Mark and Dan and Hannah are all joining us. They are all specialists in the areas that are career technical education fields. And these recognitions, to me, affirm the really good work you're doing as teachers. And I'm so thrilled our students that are excelling the way they are being recognized. So, really nice contributions and work at the school. Thank you, teachers, and thank you, students, for the great work you've done in this area. Congratulations. All right. Moving on to Posits. And we have with us the Posits State Champion Majorette Team. And I think I see them all grouped together, socially distanced, of course. And I appreciate you being with us tonight. There are eight members of this team, and I'm going to call their names off, but they won state championship and competed in March and won that. And they placed first in middle school halftime show division and second in middle school dance twirl performance division. And so, our team members are Seela Coleman, Sarah Dossey, Ferguson, Lee Griffin, Ellen Claire Hunter, Reese LaRoca, Anna Mason, and Elmer Murphy. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. And the future is bright for you and the program. I really appreciate you being a part of it today. Do you have any other competitions left?
Next year, well, this year. We're in class next year.
I see. I think, Ms. Hunter, I'm hearing in the background, right?
Yes, we wrapped it up with the same man. So, we're done for this. We're excited for next year.
That's a great way to wrap it up, Ms. Hunter. Congratulations to you and your team. Excellent work.
Thank you.
Thrilled. All right. And a new entry this year, which I think is just outstanding, is Hayden Marvitt. And Hayden Marvitt is on our fishing team with St. David Hills High School senior, and he was named in April to the Bassmaster High School All-American Team. And he finished in first place in two tournaments over the past year, including winning the 2020 Bassmaster National Championship against a field of more than 250 boats. He's had seven top-five finishes and nine top-20 finishes. Hayden, congratulations. Hayden's somewhere out there. Well, it's a great award. I'm really thrilled to be able to recognize that. It's really interesting when you listen to all the different things that our kids are involved in, and it's been all over the place, really neat things. So, our last group is our music teachers, and I see lots of them on the call right now. And for the fourth consecutive year, Best David Hills City Schools has been given the honor of being best community in music education and is sponsored by the National Association of Music Merchants. And it takes into account the high level of access, funding, and support provided to students and staff for music education throughout the system. It's so surprising we have exceptional music educators and a music program, but it very gets celebrated. Congratulations, everyone, on the well-earned one. One of the teachers are with us today. From east is Deanna Bell. From Liberty Park Middle, Jody Bryant's with us. Liberty Park Middle, Heather Kent was with us. Saw Brent Coleman at Posits. See him driving. Don't look down. Trudy Confortori from west. Kate Donaldson from Dolly Ridge. Melissa McIntyre, Best David Hills Elementary, Liberty Park. Debbie Pugh, Kahava Heights. And Liz saying Posits. Excellent. I've spent a few meetings with this group the last month, and they are a stellar group and have great passion for the program. And it shows when you get a recognition like this. So, congratulations, everyone. Those are. On to even more exciting information, financial statements. All right, Ms. Mary.
Good afternoon. I've provided the March 2021 financial statements and check register for your review. We're halfway through our fiscal year, and to date, we have collected 9% of our budgeted ad hoc tax revenues compared to 93% that we had received this time last year. Although collections have come in slower this year, we have received 1.4 million more in ad hoc tax revenues than we did at this state last year. So, that's a good indicator. And our total expenditures as of March were 51.9% of the budget compared to 53.1% last year. All things being equal, we would be at 50% of our budget right now. So, being, so ending at 51.9% is a really good indicator, considering we've already paid some large one-time expenditures like our debt service, liability insurance, a lot of annual subscriptions. So, we're looking really good to hit our mark right now. And all board bank accounts have been reconciled as of March 31st, 2021.
Good. I recommend the board approve the financial statement for March 2021.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Assembly.
Sir.
Anybody else?
Item six, I recommend the board approve consent items related to out-of-state overnight field trips for Best David Hills High School baseball and for Best David Hills Elementary East fifth grade.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve? Second? Second. If we should have. All in favor?
Jumping on the opportunity to move it this year. All right. Item seven, I recommend the board approve personnel items as suggested.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve? Assembly.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Under business, item A, I recommend the board approve the contract for parking and drive improvements in the amount of $143,640.85.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve? Assembly. Second?
Sir.
Discussion?
Yeah. So, the board of education has approved a contract like this in the past. We are actually willing to take back off of the city's bid for road improvement services. And so, construction currently holds that bid with the city. This has all been approved by Mr. Boone. And similar to what we did with the Loop Road at Posits Middle School, we're looking at improvements at east and right in campus this summer.
And separate from this contract, we have a few other things going on, relative to basketball that are not nearly as expensive, but looking at striking each one of the campuses this summer. So, and this, the road improvements will be part of PSCA funding. The strike will just be part of our campaign.
All in favor? Aye.
Item B, I recommend the board approve the principal contract amendment for Dr. Alicia Hunsberger as principal at Lewis Posits Middle School effective July 1, 2021.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve? Assembly. Second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Item C, I recommend the board approve math textbooks as suggested.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve? Assembly. Second?
Sir.
Discussion?
Anything you want to add on this, Mr. Boone?
I will add a little bit in my presentation. So, thank you. You know, we just adopted the new math standards, and this will be the textbooks that will support our teachers and full implementation of the math standards next school year. So, thank you for approving.
These are the new math standards that made it difficult for me to. All in favor? Do I have the next item?
You can.
All right. So, I'm going to take just a few minutes here. Over the last few years, there's been a lot of this job that hasn't been a ton of fun all the time, but this is actually something that is very fun. And not just because it's going to make Dr. Freeman uncomfortable, but we're going to go ahead and do it. And I would be not very faithful to Mr. Boone if I did not give you a little bit of history. So, the next item is an amendment to the superintendent's contract. Our first contract with Dr. Freeman was in 2018, which was his initial appointment. In 2019, we issued the first amendment to extend that contract a year, which would keep him at the three-year maximum for the contracts. We did it again last year with the second amendment, and we would like to continue that record with the third amendment, which is to keep Dr. Freeman at the three-year maximum for the superintendent's contract. I hesitantly ran this past year. Wanted to give you an opportunity to say no, but I think that when I discussed this with the board, there was tremendous consensus that the job that you have done this past year has been exceptional. And you are steadfast in the way that you navigate all of these challenges that have been just really unspeakable. I mean, everything that we were doing with schools and new schools and restructuring and all of that stuff would have been difficult enough, but then they have the pandemic. And the way that you navigated the ship through very stormy waters and kept everybody afloat and very steady, it was just amazing. It was just amazing. And it has been just a privilege to see you do that while keeping the vision and the goals of the system in the forefront. And I know that you will always say it was not you, that it was your team, but you were responsible for the Trinidadist team. So, at this point, I would like to make a motion that we approve the third amendment to the contract, which will extend Dr. Freeman to the full three-year maximum. In addition, we have, in that amendment, a salary increase of up to 5%. We are proposing that 3% is initiated at this point, and then we are anticipating that the state will be able to provide some increases this year as well. So, that is my motion. And the second? Assembly. All in favor?
Sir.
Second? Okay. All right. Any comments? Any? Have we put it to a vote?
Absolutely. Well, sir.
I totally agree with you. Just tell us.
All in favor? Freeman, do you have any comments? Well, it's just been a wonderful year.
Fantastic team.
Anything you don't like about that contract, I can't take out.
No problem. Yep. Thank you so much. I'm more honored to be a part of this. Thank you. All right. Let's move to administrative reports. Dr. Reagan is going to bring you up to speed with a lot of happenings in teaching and learning now and going forward and doing that all in 15 minutes, she says. Oh, you are best. All right.
I thought that was my question, Doc. It is a lot. It is my pleasure tonight to present to you a report on our goal number one in the area of teaching and learning. So, we've done a lot this year with our instructional program. You know, we started this year, and when we began, we had 19.55% of our students in remote instruction. And then you'll also see that 53.19% of our children during the first nine weeks, they were on blended instruction. That was our secondary students who were on alternating days. And then now, the fourth nine weeks, we have 12.52% of our students enrolled in remote instruction. So, the majority of our children are back with us on campus in the traditional classroom. So, our teachers have done some extraordinary things this year. So, not only have they taught in the traditional classroom, they have also taught in the remote classroom. And so, I think I would be remiss tonight if I did not acknowledge and celebrate some wonderful things that have happened this year. So, first of all, we had school during the year of COVID. There are many districts who only returned to campus just in the last few weeks or the last few months. So, we had school. I'm very proud of that. Teachers did and are still doing extraordinary things. Our children are learning. Every student from kindergarten through 12th grade received a crown buff. 26 elementary teachers taught in a remote classroom this year. All middle and high school teachers taught both in a remote classroom and traditional classrooms. Everyone used Google Classroom, Google Meet, and we get a glance for instruction and communication. 875 students are currently enrolled in remote instruction. 324 of those are elementary, and 551 are secondary students. All schools continue to participate in professional learning. So, not only did students continue to learn, our faculty and staff continued to learn as well. We participated with Solution Tree to continue our efforts with our PLCs. We participated in the Hope Miss to for Character Education and Appreciation of Diversity, and with the Alabama Best Practices Center on Instruction. And we also did some leadership professional development with John Maxwell. We successfully implemented advanced courses at the middle school level. We created plans to expand our CTE offerings to include entrepreneurship at the high school and project lead-the-way summer training for a few of our elementary teachers at each school. We increased our enroll opportunities from just four academic core courses to over 15 and over 100 career technical education courses in six different degree certification pathways for a partnership with Jeff State. And we also approved a partnership that will allow us to expand that next year with Alabama Early College. We provided the option to middle school students currently enrolled in a world language course to earn a high school credit. We implemented second-grade standard space report cards. We implemented new math standards. We developed a kindergarten readiness guide and launched the intentional pursuit podcast. So, as a district, not only have we made it through a COVID year, we had a tremendous amount of celebrations. We've done a lot of other things as well. All of our schools, I have to give a shout out to our schools. East adopted a new touch on the eagle, which stands for empathy, acceptance, grit, love, and excellence. Dolly Ridge focused on their core values this year. West was named a 2021 Alabama State School of Character. Heights Heroes did great things, and I love this when I ask the administrators, what are some things you're really proud of this year? I love that kindergartners are writing independently and being brave spellers. So, when we think about our girls, I thought that was really sweet. They're being brave spellers. We also, at Liberty Park, at the elementary school there, they really worked this year on developing who they are and what they value. And so, they used an acronym for Rebels to stand for respect, empathy, bravery, excellence, legacy, and service. And they also launched two new leadership roles, the Safety Patrol and Tour Guides. Posits, I think this is amazing. If you'll remember, we just said that we launched all advanced courses this year, which was, it was going to be, you know, a challenge during the regular year, but it was especially a challenge during a year that we were doing both remote and traditional learning. But we are excited and very proud because we are home to three of Alabama's four qualifiers for the 2021 Math Counts National Competition. Two of those students are at Posits, and one is at Liberty Park. And it's the first one in the history of Liberty Park to qualify for nationals. So, we're very proud of our students. Also, we, and we mentioned tonight that we were named the best community for music education for four consecutive years in a row. The freshman campus and main campus, they've been doing some amazing work, too. We have 11 national merit finalists. The amount of money was unbelievable that was raised for RISE. $337,365 was raised for the O'Neill Comprehensive Cancer Center. And then at the freshman campus, another thing that we're proud of is 18 freshman females joined with four junior females to pioneer the Sisterhood Project, a new organization focused on helping girls become happier with themselves and others. So, we have had a lot of accomplishments, both with our remote and traditional success. And so, these are just some quotes from some teachers. Ms. Morrison said at the beginning of the year, her math team class was one half were traditional and one half were remote, and now only five are remote and 18 are back in person. And Ms. Bender, she had five traditional and 13 remote when we began the year, and now that's just swapped. She has 13 traditional and five remote. But I think that's important to point out because we've seen the tremendous success. Our math teams just scored better this year than they have in the past. And so, our teachers have been able to accomplish that, and our students have been able to accomplish that, whether they were in a traditional or remote setting. So, we are very proud of them. This year, we had 12 advanced courses serving both gifted and advanced learners, and so we had complete alignment. If you will look, this was the year before. We had the two gifted courses, and we had a few advanced courses. This year, all advanced, complete alignment, and that was done both in the traditional and remote setting. Not only, I think, is it important for you to hear tonight what we've said and to celebrate the successes that our administrators have shared, but I think it's important to look at the data. When we look at our assessments, pre-pandemic and pandemic data, what does that say? What story does it tell about our students and the learning that has taken place? This is the iReady assessment in reading. And so, for the year 1920, pre-pandemic, we had 4,671 students that were tested with iReady. And you can see 53% of them scored in the darker green area, and that's muted on grade level or above. And then 22%, those are the ones that are home grade level, that 18% were below, and of course, the other colors are students who are at most speed. But you can see, our students scored almost the same in 2021 during the pandemic as they did pre-pandemic. So, that's very exciting when we look at that because that was the winter before the pandemic, and then this past winter scores. And we see very similar results in math. So, I think that's important to note, that our students scored almost the same. So, are there some learning gaps? Yes, there are some learning gaps, but we feel very confident about our students' learning this year. So, we also learned some lessons that improved our practice. And so, when we ask administrators, what are some things, what are some things your teachers are saying, your students are saying, your parents, that we have learned that we can do better as a result of things we've learned? So, these were just some things that they've listed that has been able to help us reach more people, provide people, provide opportunities for more engagement. So, you can see that there are a lot of things on here that we thought, processes that we have that we've been able to make better or make available to more people. And then I thought that Ms. Anavon, at principal at Liberty Park Elementary, she said this so well when we were talking about lessons that we've learned. She said our children have composed beautiful original songs, learned new media for crafting amazing pieces of art, anchored and produced engaging daily broadcast episodes, authored creative short stories, solved challenging brain benders and layered problems, researched and debated famous Alabamians and turning points in our history, designed and marketed original products, cared for crawfish and millipedes, traveled virtually to faraway destinations, discovered favorite book series, shaved minutes off their mile record, learned to treat others with kindness, and grew to love learning. And they did it all with masks, plexiglass, classroom lunches, limited interaction with other groups or guests, and hand sanitizer by the gallon. Our faculty and children have taught me that anything is possible when tackled with the optimism of an elementary school student on the first day of school and the tenacity of a teacher on the last. So, now that we've celebrated and talked about the wonderful things that we've been able to accomplish even in a year of COVID, what to expect? What's on the horizon? What do we have to look forward to next year? Well, we're going to turn the corner with summer school. So, I wanted to give you an update, and we'll have the elementary reading camp, we'll have middle school remediation, summer school, and then we'll also have credit recovery at the high school and credit enhancement. And all of this information will be available on our website tomorrow. Also, we're in the middle of Power School training and training, so we will fully implement everything with Power School next school year.
And that's our replacement of I Now?
Yes.
Well, I will.
Yes. And so, it covers all these areas, master scheduling, grading, attendance, enrollment, health, and special programs. All of that will be in Power School. Also, now that we've Also, now that we've been able to provide devices for each student, we will continue with that. And so, our rising students in grades three through twelve will keep their Chromebooks. The seniors will turn in their Chromebooks after exams prior to graduation. Our rising third graders will receive their Chromebooks in August when they return to school. And student devices are ongoing. We have a refresh cycle that we follow. And so we're replacing all the middle school student Chromebooks and we've already replaced the ones at Posits and we're on schedule to replace those at Liberty Park in May.
So do I read that like what you did in the third grade you keep until we replace it, so they're not turning them in?
No, they will not be turning them each year. So they'll have them and they attend summer school, they'll have the device for that. So they'll just keep the device that was issued to them until it's time for them to Next year, we will continue to utilize Google Classroom, Google Meet, and Week at a Glance. Thank you for approving the math textbooks. So, we will have, in elementary, we'll use Bridges in Mathematics. For the middle school, we'll use Envision. In high school, we use Big Ideas. And then those other textbooks that are specific to specialty courses. And we will have full implementation of the math standards. This year was a transition year, so there were a few courses that we still pull in from last year, but next year we'll be on the full implementation of the math standards. And so our teachers will be receiving professional development this summer on the textbooks that were approved. Next year, we will be in an English Language Arts adoption year. So next year, we'll start this whole process again with ELA. They were just recently adopted by the State Department. And so we'll begin with professional learning, we'll unpack the new standards, we'll be in a transition year. So as we are beginning to implement those standards, spring twenty-two, we'll adopt the new textbooks and materials and then we'll have the full implementation in the 2022, 2023 school year. In reading, we'll be implementing the Alabama Literacy Act. We will implement phonics first and second grade, we'll have phonics first training for third grade, we'll have the summer reading camp. So we are in full force with the Literacy Act. We'll continue with our professional development focus on PLCs with our partnership with Alabama Best Practices Center and Hope Institute. We will have Design It Yourself sessions this summer, we'll continue with John Maxwell and Leadership, we'll have training on the new ELA and math standards, Power School, and Project Lead the Way. We'll continue to focus on grading in Power School, there's a grading module. And so all of get grades kindergarten through twelfth are aligned to standards. We'll have our kindergarten through third grade using standard spaced report cards. And we'll just continue training and focused on research-based practices in the area of grading. Alternative Placement, it's no longer going to be referred to as Vision School. It is located in the main school building, so it's not separate from the school itself. So we're just, it will be called Alternative Placement. Students will be served by a combination of four content area teachers and specialists as needed for special education, counseling, nurses, EL, mental health, et cetera. And we will address both punitive and non-punitive student needs, although they'll be in separate locations. We have our process in place for admission and that will remain the same. And then our remote or virtual will no longer be referred to as Vision School. And students choosing this option will be served in a different location by different Our CTE in the area of career and technical education, we're going to have some additional offerings. We're excited to be able to increase our STEM opportunities and our dual enrollment options. We're going to continue our focus on PLCs or professional learning communities. And finally, in the area of remote instruction, next year, we are going to return our teachers' focus to the traditional classroom. This year, we asked them to do extraordinary things and they have just exceeded expectations as you've seen, all the accomplishments that we've been able to do this year. However, we are not going to ask them to do that again next year. We are going to allow them to focus back to our traditional classroom. So, we will have a sixth through twelfth grade option only. So we will not have a remote option for our elementary students. They'll have to have a passing grade from this previous year to be enrolled in a remote course option. The content and instruction will be provided by edgenuity and access teachers. Our teachers will not be teaching our remote students. We will have facilitators and they will monitor the students who we enroll in the edgenuity and access courses. Also, course selection in our remote option will be limited to the required courses for the grade level or for graduation requirements. And only a small number of courses will be advanced. There are no honors courses in access or edgenuity. There are a few AP courses and at the middle school level in advanced math, but there are no honors courses available. Students will be required to take some assessments on campus. Students may elect to take up to two courses on campus, including but not limited to band course and athletics. No remote student will be allowed to remain on campus if not enrolled in a class without supervision or approval from an administrator. If a student wishes to select the remote learning option, the school counselor will schedule a time with the student to build the schedule based on the available access or edgenuity courses to ensure that all courses needed for graduation are met. And there will also be a contract for next year for remote learning. So they will have to sign this contract prior to the enrollment in the requested remote option. And finally, students not making adequate progress or attending to lesson in timely manner will be referred to the SST team and may have to return to the traditional model if they are not able to agree.
What's the timeline? We're asking families to decide their route into remote.
We will have all of the information available by May first, so in the next few days. And we will give them till the last week of school to make their selection and turn that into the school administrators. It will be a year commitment. So we need to know that information. They'll have a month, the month of May, to determine if that's the option they would want to pursue for next year because our administrators will need to make sure that we get them enrolled in those courses, make sure that we have the schedules ready and done in Power School as well because again, we are in that transition period with our new SIS or School Information System.
And just to be clear, it's taught by edgenuity and access, so when they have questions, they are working with those professionals, not the SIS team.
That's correct. We will provide facilitators. And so the facilitator, if they, you know, have an issue and they're not able to resolve their problem, then they will be able to communicate with our facilitators and our facilitators will be the liaison between our base school and the edgenuity teacher or access teachers.
So is this option just if the family has a preference for remote? It is not for families that have medical issues or other issues where they need to be online or remote?
Right. In the past, prior to COVID, we had homebound instruction. Homebound instruction that originates with the physician's request. And so any students that have a medical need or any type of issue like that, we will serve through our homebound program. Homebound, this is available to homebound if that's the option they choose, but that will be addressed through our homebound program. Any other questions or comments? I know it's a lot. Dr. Freeman, I think I might have pushed my fifteen minute.
Important information, of course, parents should hear about this in the coming days.
Yes.
That's probably the thing most on people's minds, I think, right now is what it looks like next year. The other question would be operationally what it looks like and we'll share more about that in May, I think, like summer involvement, like from the operations side, all questions related to health and safety precautions. Obviously, you can see our position is that we have an optimistic view of the fall and a return to what we think is a normal operation with a lot of lessons learned. Dr. Freeman didn't give the particular numbers because we don't exactly know them yet, but summer school, and there is opportunity for more. This is an unusual year and we do have more needs. We're collecting summer school, particularly middle grades. And so that's just the reality of what we're facing. We have had good successes academically, but we have had some students that have struggled and it's not just been virtual. We've had others that are probably more by percentage that are actually with us in traditional classrooms.
That's correct. I would say when we look at both our middle and high school, when we look at our failure rates, I would say about thirty percent across the board are remote and the other are traditional. So our traditional students, it's been a struggle for them. But when we think about the environment they've been in, starting the school year on alternating days, it's just been very challenging. And then we think about our teachers. And our teachers have been teaching both traditional students and remote students. And so next year, we hope to be able to return everyone's focus back to the traditional classroom, our teachers' focus, back to the traditional classroom. But yet, we know there's, you know, there are our students in our community who have flourished in the remote instructional options, so we want to make sure that we provide that next year, even though it will look much different from this year.
That's important to know. So hopefully in doing this, we've offloaded our faculty. So moving into twenty, next school year, we're going to look more like 2019, where we're in-class teaching. Some of our virtual things are moving out of the in-person classroom where our teachers are back teaching face-to-face every day.
Correct. They will have access to edgenuity, but that's a resource. Like iReady is a resource, PlayTo. We have had multiple things that have been available, multiple resources that are available to our teachers. But this past year, we have leaned, we've had to lean more heavily on those resources. Make sure will be the expectation that those things again, be used sparingly, that whenever they come into the classroom, we'll be able to do the hands-on group instruction, the differentiation that we're used to seeing, that what we are used to when we think about a traditional classroom experience.
As a parent, I haven't seen any resource that comes close to what our teachers can provide us.
Absolutely.
They can enhance and they can do so, but I mean, what we stand on, what we have developed to be so important in our district is what our teachers bring to us in classroom.
Yes.
Getting back to that and freeing them up, that would be a huge step in our direction.
Yes. But like you said, we've had celebrations, we've had challenges, and this summer we'll be addressing some of those challenges with our summer school.
But all in all, we've done a fantastic job. I mean, we're one of the few schools in the district that went back as soon as we did Montez, Weyman, and there are schools all over the country. I think I read that about twenty-five percent of people are back in school at full time in the country. And so.
And I love the way that, you know, it's one thing to get to the end of this year and go, I can't wait for things to get back to the way they were. But it's another thing to look back and say, in the creativity and in the challenges, what have we learned to make what we're doing even better? And I think, you know, that's just amazing to be able to have that reflection and just thoughtfulness about, you know, we've had an opportunity to do things different ways and to pick out those pieces of those different ways that even strengthen the rest. It's amazing.
Thanks, Dr. Freeman. And you know, we stay quite based in capital planning, looking toward the future, there are a number of things that we do constantly and that we have been engaging in exercises the last couple of years, gathering points that help us with our conversation about capital planning. And Dr. Martin, so share just a little bit about that as we pivot into an update on our energy management work we're doing.
Dr. Freeman, you were allowing me the opportunity to talk with the board just for a minute about our capital planning and what that looks like. You're going to hear this evening from representatives from Schneider Electric, Ben Yar, and ESCO and Energy Supply Company. Over the next couple of months, I believe you'll hear from a series of groups that are part of this larger capital planning that the Board of Education is engaged in. If you stop and you think about the transformation system has done from a capital standpoint, it's been significant. I mean, even in the last couple of years, moving from Central to Valley Ridge, your elementary schools or our elementary schools in East and West, going from a K-three model to a K-five model, bringing a new middle school campus online at Posits, a new freshman campus online, allowing for some spaces there at the high school, we've seen a pretty significant transformation. And so now as we start to look at the future, what does the next stage of capital planning look like for the Board of Education? You can see here, using our board-approved strategic plan always as the foundation for everything that we do, I really went and looked at two of the tenants from the strategic planning model, the first being the making sure that we have safe and nurturing environments for our staff and our duties. And so just in working with Dr. Freeman, this was really something that you've been working on or he has been working on for the last couple of years, just in terms of planning. And he has brought back in the fall our capital plan to the board for approval. And I know next fall will be the same, but this really falls under this heading of the Mestaby Hills School Safe and Healthy Schools Reinvestment Program. And so think about those safe and nurturing environments, we brought in a couple of partners to support us with that. And the first partner is one that we all know, Sean Kalma with Lathan, did a facility assessment over the course of these last couple of months and looked at all of our school sites. What are the things at our school site that our school sites need from a facility standpoint to make sure that they are safe, secure, ready for students to be there? So this is everything from our mechanical systems, our roofs, our envelope of the facilities. What are those things that may need improving over the next couple of years? Again, we are, we've just completed several large-scale projects, now forecasting in the future what are those things that will need. The second we've been working on for a couple of years now, DOL Solutions LLC, this is our safety and security team that has come in, they've supported us really on two fronts. The first front, they came into each one of our schools, sat with principals, sat with school safety teams, and did a facility safe and security audit. Where are those infrastructure upgrades that we need to make sure that we're eliminating any vulnerabilities for each one of our school sites? And so what we look to do was, we look to bring to Dr. Freeman a recommendation by February first of all of the infrastructure upgrades, infrastructure needs from a safety and security standpoint. The other thing that we are currently working on now at DOL is helping to facilitate that conversation, is we're looking at our safety and security plans. So we've now pivoted or shifted from infrastructure and now we're looking at policy. What are those procedural protocol items that we need in each one of our schools that are uniform across the system? That is something where to take place here in Mestaby Hills, that our staff, students, administration would feel ready for those types of events. And so we're actually, we just in the last week, worked with each one of those individuals at the schools, the administrator that is responsible for the safety and security plan, for any type of evacuation plan, any type of protocol when it comes to secure perimeter or any of those items we've been working on. One component of this as well is what McGee is working on, our safety and security communication plan. So what does this look like in terms of making sure that everyone is aware of an event or to occur? And so that's what DOL has been, that's a partner we've been utilizing there as part of this, as part of this tenant here. And then the last one that I put down, Todd Smith, his team, Kyle Keith, they'll share with you a little bit about energy conservation, how an ESCO can come in and stay alongside the Mestaby Hills Board and when it comes to one of these ESCO procedures. And so they'll get into that as well. The other that you can see here is multiple paths to a bold future. And this is really the exciting, this is where we start to look at spaces and how we can utilize some of these spaces and what this looks like from a programming standpoint. And so I know Dr. Freeman, in your conversations, probably talked to three hundred-plus stakeholders just at this stage in the process, in terms of trying to build capacity and bring individuals into those kinds. into those conversations. So that's not just one or two individuals who are making determinations of what new program it might look like at the high school, since we now have 550 students that have shifted to another campus. You know, we also have freshman campus that originally housed 1,200 students, now down to 550, and then the Board of Education will also acquire some additional properties. And so what does programming look like for each one of those sites? And so through those conversations, you can see here, HPM, who we've used as a partner in the past, had an individual come in and facilitate conversation through a design charrette, all different sectors of the school system, from, you can see, I've got a couple there, STEM design teams, fine arts design teams, athletic design teams, so all of those different constituency groups coming in and being part of the conversation in terms of how they would like to see facilities improved through this process. We've talked a little bit about the athletic strategic plan. I know that we're right in the midst of that now, and anticipating that being completed in the fall, September, October timeframe. But through that process is also some conversation about what facility enhancements may look like there. And then finally, what we are getting ready to kick off, Dr. Rainey and myself here, June through September, having conversations with what we are referring to as site planning cadres at each one of the schools. So we'll again bring in constituency group, bring in stakeholders to have conversations about what would you like to see happen in your schools from a facility capital standpoint? And this is really our opportunity to dream, right? Dream about our spaces, dream about what the potential looks like in Vestavia Hills going forward. So really, two different platforms here, one from the standpoint of programming, which falls into that multiple paths to a bold future for Vestavia Hills when it comes to capital planning and design, and the other one, making sure that the sites that we currently have, that they're safe, nurturing, and what we need here in Vestavia Hills to facilitate education. So let me stop there and see if there are any questions before I turn things over to Mr. Smith and his team.
Okay. All right. Todd, floor.
So thank you for having us again today. Absolute pleasure. I have to say, it's a treat to come here because Kyle, myself, and our team of over 100 folks here in Alabama, we've had the chance to, you know, work with over a third of the school systems in the state, and we've had the chance to go through just under 1,000 of the 1,500 schools in the state. So we feel like we have a really good handle on what we're seeing and what we're comparing everything to. And the way that y'all run your school system and the way that your administration goes about everything is so professional. And it's exciting for me, having lived in Vestavia for 11 years, to actually get to work on some schools that I call home every once in a while. So it's really, really neat. And today, I just want to go over everything that we've been putting together kind of as a culmination of where we move forward from here. We've taken a look at all of your critical needs. We've really designed around the things that you need as a school system right off the bat. But most importantly, how do you become fiscally responsible, and how do you move forward from here? And so just a quick recap on our program. We try to like to take a look at how the school system operates, how you spend the resources that you're given. And then we try to find technologies and solutions that marry with your school system, reduce your costs, and then creates a revenue stream. And so I'll go, I'll go over a couple of things in terms of what we've done, but we have the overview of the scope, we have kind of the construction plan of where we want to go on the immediate future, both here in the summer as well as over the course of the next couple of years, because this is a pretty comprehensive scope. Want to talk a little bit about the plan for internal communications in which you're moving forward. Thank you. You have to click a fan. I appreciate that. So back in March of 2020, right, as COVID was happening and everyone was kind of scrambling on what do we do, we were asked to come and take a look and put together a plan for your school system. That was interesting, going through initial design during, you know, can you be on campus? Do we have to wear masks? Is there plexiglass? What's the security? We were going through that with a lot of systems, but again, I applaud you on how you handled everything. We were able to get through a lot of the design that spring, and we went into the summer and the fall, talking about our midterm design and the directions that we wanted to go. And there were some key critical items that were going to have to be done over summer construction. So it's always been our goal to get everything ready to go this spring so that we can jump into the summer. We presented our final design approach in collaboration with the administration over the last couple of months. We're working with your attorney, Mr. Boone, on an actual contract we're going towards implementation. We're working on some of those details and hope to be before you very soon to move forward. So if you'll flip to the five priorities that we found for your school system. Number one is major HVAC systems that need to be replaced. There's key critical things that have to be accomplished, and they need to be accomplished in order to provide those healthy, safe, and nurturing environments for your schools and your teachers and students. You also have a number of roofs that need to be replaced, and Kyle will hit on those roofs in which we have in the plan, but those are going to be very important, obviously, to keep your physical plants for your schools you have right now just operating as is. And then, obviously, driving operational efficiency is very important to us as a company, and it's very important to you and your pocketbooks, and so we want to focus on anywhere that we can drive cost efficiencies and make you guys as efficient as possible. And then the healthy and productive learning environments has become more and more of a hot topic over the course of the last year, and it's something that we feel a responsibility for with every school system that we work with, and we feel very confident in our solutions here to deliver that to you. And then finally, student enrichment and engagement. There are just tons of opportunities for a company like ours, with the office just down 31, to be engaged in your local schools, whether it's career shadowing days, whether it's helping people understand what you can do in this industry as a living, or making a living, or whether it's assisting with curriculum development, or anything along those lines, we're here as a community partner to you. So if you'll flip, Kyle, to the district energy usage, what you'll see is that we broke down every single individual school down into the different types of categories that they spend, electricity, natural gas, and water on.
Yeah, in case y'all can't see those.
Yeah, the tiny row. Tiny row. And that'll be on page five, if you want to flip ahead to that. But what we boil down energy usage to is an index that we call an EUI, or an Energy Utilization Index. On page five, you'll see that in the blue highlighted there, and you'll see as a district, you average 65.1. That's obviously skewed a little bit by the high school. The high school is just such an always-on, always-available, there's just going to be a lot of things that are always happening there, so it's always going to be consuming more energy naturally. But you'll see a lot of those schools in the 40s, some of them even in the 50s and 60s. What we like to see from most schools is somewhere in the 20 to 30 range, and then the high schools maybe in the 50, 60, 70 range. So at 65, you guys are, you know, definitely above average, which means there's room for improvement. You'll see electricity, you spend almost 2.2 million, natural gas, just over 200,000. And then water's a significant, you know, item, as we all know from our water bills here, Birmingham Water Works has some of the higher rates around the state. And so water is of particular interest at this school system for us. So right now, just under 3.3 million. That will be increasing a little bit as you bring some of the new schools online, so just keep that in mind. Right now, you're at $2.67 a square foot.
I assume Posits is not on here because we implemented
Exactly.
many of these things when we
So you may see a $200,000 or so increase once that's brought online. If you flip to the next page, this is where we project where we're going to be after we implement all of these things. You'll see that that EUI post, it goes from 65 to 44, so just a dramatic reduction in energy use. That's almost a 20%, or over a 27% cost savings, and then a 32% actual energy savings. That's going to bring you from $2.67 a square foot down to $2.02 a square foot. And again, a lot of that is skewed by the high school, but we just feel very confident that there's just a huge amount of savings here at this system, and these technologies that Kyle's going to talk about us implementing are going to be able to deliver those to you, just like the other school systems that we work with in the state. Do you have any questions specifically around this?
What's the project life? So this is if you do A, B, and C of a project, how long, what is it, four or five years?
Well, so Alabama statute allows us to guarantee this performance for up to 20 years, so we try to, we try to marry the lifecycle of the equipment with the extent of the program. So your roofs, your HVAC, your new LED lighting, those sorts of things are going to last a long time. They're going to be married with some more technological things that need to be updated, maybe every five to seven years, 10 years, 12 years. So we try to make sure the useful life of the whole exceeds whatever contract term we go to.
Yeah. I think for you guys, though, in particular, just the heavy infrastructure nature of a lot of these items, the lifecycle is much greater than just that 20-year threshold.
Yeah. And you will notice the one outlier, Central Elementary, we don't have any cost savings associated with that, because right now, you're just using it kind of as a teacher learning center, training, et cetera. We don't want to claim that we're going to be able to turn that off at any certain point, but there are pretty small opportunities in the future if you decide to use that building in a different way, where we obviously drive cost savings for that facility as well. So the overall financial and environmental impact value here, right now, we have just under $22 million of improvements that we think could be put back into your school system. You'll see the baseline utility cost just under 2.3, 3.2 million. And then you have your projected savings made up of electricity, gas, and natural, natural gas and water, and that's just under $900,000 a year. So just a huge impact on your actual utilities themselves. We've also gone in and database how you guys spend maintenance dollars and what it's taking to keep these old systems running. So we do anticipate over $147,000 of annual operation on maintenance savings associated with that. And you can just think about 20,000 lamps out there, replacing them every single day, all of your old compressors you have to fix, all of your old refrigerant, different things that have to be done on a daily basis by your team. A lot of this will take care of those things. So over a million dollars a year impact to the school system. Over a 20-year partnership, that'll generate over 27 million. You look at the annual impact, we kind of divide that into cars removed, houses taken off grid, trees planted. From a sustainability standpoint, this will be a huge message to the school system is, you know, making an impact on the green side of things as well.
Give me from the million dollars a year over 20 years to the 27 million.
Sure. So what we have to do is we have to take kind of an assumption that utility rates are going to increase over time. So the way that we figure out what are they going to increase specifically for this area is we go back to the Department of Energy and we look at what they've done over the last 20 years. It's over 3%, so we rack it down to a 3% increase each year, so that utility savings of $1 million, you know,
Words.
will become more over time. We often caution people, that also means that your utilities will, you know, gradually increase over time. So it's just something that you have to think about in budgeting in there as well. A good question, though. But that is what we will be responsible to the school system for, and if we do not achieve those savings, then we're annually liable to. And so we make sure that we support you, and then we track, and we measure, and we verify how we're doing that each year. Any questions with that? Okay, Kyle's going to go through a little bit of the scope at each school, and I'll be your clipper guy.
Yeah, I'll just
Okay.
Thank you, Todd. So as I go through the scope here, one of the things that I'll mention is, for one, y'all staff's done a really good job staying ahead of the curve when it comes to just general operations and maintenance. One of the areas that we see as a limiting factor there is just the sheer amount of time that they have. Y'all have Tony Blue and his team that just kind of handle things as they can. They do a really good job at each particular campus overseeing everything, but with all the activities going on, with the age of some of the buildings, that can be a challenge to keep up with that. So not only is this going to address a lot of the deferred maintenance that is on the horizon, this is also going to bring a lot of new technology to the table as well. The first, as we mentioned in kind of our midterm update back in the fall, is district-wide interior LED lighting. So y'all have over 15,000 lamps and fixtures that would be replaced with this. So you walk into a room like this and you see the lights that are on right now, what you don't see is every time one of the small ballast goes out, someone has to go and replace that. So this will update all the lighting, this will also go to LEDs, which don't have ballasts, which are going to go out. So it's going to really set you up to add lighting that is going to last a lot longer than is currently there right now. So district-wide lighting upgrades, you're also going to see some electrical panels that will be moved over at Dolly Ridge as well. And then this is also going to get you up to the latest life safety code. So as we update the lighting, we're going to make sure that all the e-res, battery backups, everything that needs to be done are safe. So if power goes out, you have circumstantial lights that stay on for people to be able to evacuate the building. District-wide exterior lighting as well. We did a full assessment of this, not only just from a functionality standpoint, but also looking at it from a safety standpoint as well. You have some extra fixtures that are old, you can see there, that are kind of corroded, some of them may stay on 24 hours a day, some of them may not come on at all. So just replacing those, so you have nice clean lighting outside of the building. Obviously, these schools are the cornerstone of our community, so just having a nice, bright, clean environment at each school is going to be big. It's also going to address the parking lot lighting as well. And then I would say on the athletic lighting side, this is one of the areas that you will see a huge impact. So not only will we be addressing the lights at gyms, but we're also looking at the tennis court, softball field, baseball field, and football stadium as well. So obviously, being able to invest in the athletic environment.
Do these go all LED?
Yes, yes. In fact, we've already changed out the lights in the freshman campus. I can't remember if that was
Great.
before or after. We talked to you guys last, but that was presented to us as a short-term need. Some of the lights were already out, so we said, let's just go ahead and change them out, so you can see some of the before and afters there, as well as right there as well. So yes, huge difference.
They need to repaint the floor.
Just a commercial.
Absolutely. So, okay, so I would say out of anything, this is the area that Tony and his team are most excited about. When you look at y'all's buildings, you think about the different spaces in them, from gyms to classrooms to offices, all the different things that go on, they run at different schedules, and his team currently have no good centralized way to operate and maintain all of those different things. So when it comes time to schedule around the different events, eliminate waste, find times on weekends, that's a challenge for his team to kind of run around and be able to do that. So they will now have one centralized system to be able to run the entire school system from an iPad. Essentially, they'll be able to have access at their office, but if they're home on the weekends, night times, whatever, and let's say the chiller at the high school goes down, they can immediately pull it up on the iPad to begin to diagnose the problem, to be proactive with how they're operating and maintaining that. So I would say, out of anything, this has got to put your maintenance staff very far ahead of where they currently are, so.
And that's kind of what the new thermostats in the classrooms will look like. You see the Vestavia logo there. It'll set an arresting pattern, and if the teachers need a temperature adjustment, they can go to it, press up or down, and then if they need to come in on nighttime, weekends, holidays, when the schools aren't normally scheduled to be on, they can just go up to it, they can press it, it'll turn their classroom on for a couple hours so that they can work in there comfortably. They're not going to have to worry about calling anybody to turn on the air conditioning. So that's usually a big question from the teacher's side.
You want to control the external lighting too?
We can't.
Like, all we do.
So in fact, one of the things that our team worked diligently on is just kind of customizing this around y'all's specific needs. You look at the high school that has a major central plant, that's very different than the way some of the elementary schools operate. So we customize each of these to the particular schools. So earlier this year, we actually sat in this room for about four or five hours with your maintenance team, and our team going through a demo and what exactly this looks like at other schools, getting feedback on what they like, how they want it customized to them, so that we have a very customized plan for what your maintenance staff wants and expects out of the system. So, all right, now the fun stuff. All of the mechanical upgrades that are going to be done, I would say this is going to be one of the largest impacts that is going to be taking place. You have the major systems like the chiller at the high school and the cooling tower that are, 1996 cooling tower, an original to the building, that are just, and they're useful life, it's just come due to where it's time. So replacing a chiller at the high school, you also see Dolly Ridge, West and East, that all have just a myriad of units and systems that are beyond their useful life that we're going to plan to redo. But more importantly, it's also not going to be just a one-for-one replacement, there's also going to be some redesign that takes place so that your students and teachers are more comfortable. You have some areas right now, like at Dolly Ridge, where you'll have one unit that serves maybe a bank of four to six classrooms, and there's only one thermostat, that creates a challenge. So redesigning it so those different areas have their own particular thermostat is going to make it much more comfortable for the people in the building. So redesign, that's going to be good. This is going to give you a projection of where the school system is at today, what we're going to be addressing, but also what's ahead. So you'll see in the pie chart, as in both charts here, but in particular, the pie chart over there, where you're currently at from a lifecycle perspective on your HVAC. over there, where you're currently at from a life cycle perspective on your HVAC, you can see is broken down to fifteen-plus years old, less than ten years old, and eleven to fifteen years old. And I would say you guys are actually doing a good job where you're you want to have a very equal share of each of those lives out where you don't have everything going down at one time. So y'all have done a good job planning thus far, how you and how you replace it. So this particular phase of the partnership will address the units that are fifteen years and older, and then will obviously begin to help you plan for some of those other systems as they get older as well. But the focus right now is on the red.
And well, yeah, it's red here and then red and orange on the years. Anything two thousand six and newer or two thousand six and older is going to be replaced within this. And then there's some key ones in the yellow that we see over the course of the next few years, but that will be after we take care of the first round of of what's going on.
Any questions on that?
You go back with a standard HVAC, so basically all of our schools will eventually get to the same brand or where you got some economy scale of replacement problems.
Yeah, yeah. So there will be a focus on some standardization where you see fit. Obviously, you take the high school, for example, that's going to be a little bit more one-off, but other areas, we will try to standardize. More importantly, through our procurement method, as this partnership, we can spec and design around what y'all's maintenance staff likes. So when it comes to standardization of equipment types, brands, things like that, we can obviously build that into our program.
And that was all part of our discussion with your operations team. What do you like to work on? What's the easiest place to get parts for certain types of equipment? We're trying to build that all around, what they do on a daily basis.
What's the timeline to get all the fifteen-plus years?
Yes, so for all of the HVAC and mechanical that are that's currently in this phase, we plan to get geared up starting this fall for that and for this first phase to be done late twenty twenty-two, early twenty twenty-three. So we specifically designed our construction plan around the nature of some of the equipment. Obviously, you can't change out the chiller in the high school during the school year, so that's going to be a summertime-type effort. Maybe some other areas that that can take place over Christmas holiday, spring break, things like that, but we have it planned out between now and twenty twenty-three.
And we cover that then a little bit later.
These two thousand seven, two thousand eight, we've got high numbers.
Uh huh.
Those are located.
I believe that's Liberty Park School. Right, and and so that's those are actually, I think, going to be okay for a little bit longer just because of the type of the system that's there. Also, with the control work we're doing right now, I feel like we're going to be extending the life cycle of the Liberty Park campuses HVAC system for a little while. So it's actually the other yellow that might need to be taken care of ahead of the Liberty Park campuses just because of the type of system.
Okay, so roofs as well, this is one that's been a very much a priority and topic of conversation for our team since we started. In conjunction, actually, with Leith and as y'all's trusted partner, we worked together on the roofing assessment and make sure that what we were planning and accounting for in our design and construction plan was in line with what they were looking at as well. So we work closely with them on these efforts. We built out a plan and prioritized it just like we did with the mechanical. So you can see here, these are the roofs that will be replaced in this first phase of work. You can see in total, it's about a hundred and eighteen thousand square feet of roofs that need to be done. Knowing that those were a more short-term need, we actually are planning to to get that going this summer to tackle it. We know that those are some of the top priorities, so that's going to be some of our initial focus as as we get going. But you can see they are broken out here in the next few schools, Dolly Ridge, East, West, just things that happen over time. You can also see how we color-coded it, broken out at a few of the schools as well, and how they will be replaced. Any questions on the roofs? Kyle?
What does the EPDM stand for in terms of the roof?
That's that's a good question. I always refer to it as EDK.
Yeah, but we'll check with Hal, our engineer on that. That's a good one. Now, we.
Probably carbonates.
There you go.
Yeah.
Kimberly, come in, come in, hey, do it.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. I've been doing this twelve years. I've never been outside. So some additional upgrades that are taking place, water water efficiency upgrade, just standardizing the different valves and flush systems that are across the district will be big. Oh, one thing we were going to mention just on the water side is when our team comes in and just begins our design, the first thing we do is just get a general assessment of everything, see what all is out there, see if we see anything weird that's going on. And we actually, good news for you guys, were able to catch an issue with a water meter pretty quickly out at East. When our team was going through and doing meter mapping and everything and going through the utility data, we actually noticed that one of the water meters out there was accruing a pretty significant charge, and there wasn't actually any water flowing through that. So good news is Hal would help him. Todd and I kind of PDMD this effort. He lives right by East. He actually went out there every day and checked that meter just to see how much it was running and to verify that, hey, there's no water running through this. So we've actually already reprogrammed and fixed that meter out there. That was about thirty-six thousand dollars a year that that had accrued over the prior twelve months.
We just received the credit.
Yeah, good job, Max.
Thank you.
And I'll also say one thing that's not in the water side is we looked at all of your ice machines. There's a lot of them that are water-cooled, meaning that the cooling water is just dumped constantly. Each one of these ice machines is costing like five to six thousand dollars a year to run, so we're going to switch all those out and move to air-cooled machines. But water is such an important topic here locally because you we spend so much with the cost of sewage. So that's something where we were able to find some things like the laundry efficiency as well. It makes sense here, whereas other parts of the state normally doesn't. So it's it's pretty exciting to be able to have an impact like that.
Yeah. And the final piece as well is just general building envelope you think about at your house, and you see the weather stripping and seals and gaps that you want sealed all the time. The same thing happens to buildings. Obviously, a lot of them are thirty, forty, fifty years old. They just deteriorated over time, so this will go back in with a comprehensive building envelope package to make sure everything's sealed properly. You know, I know there are a lot of spaces where you could walk through and see gaps and doors of light coming through, so as door sweeps, weather stripping, caulking, sealing everything up, insulating to make sure that it's operating as effectively as possible. Obviously, we're designing for efficiency. We want the cold to stay in and the and the heat to stay out, so this is just one step in doing that. So preliminary construction schedule, this is what we built it around. And Plan Four, starting this summer, Dr. Freeman has been integral in our team helping communicate this out to y'all's team. So we've already began some of those efforts as far as where we will start and having that communication with the principals. You can see here, this these top areas are focused for the summer. So lighting at the high school and athletic fields, that's obviously going to be key. Getting that radio for this fall. Water at high school in West, building envelope at Liberty Park and Dolly Ridge, roofing at Dolly Ridge in East, those two are categorized as the worst, so that will be the the start there. Then obviously, we'll be finalizing some of these items that have to go to Department of Construction Management for our submittals, so we'll be getting those ready to submit, start ordering equipment, stuff like that to gear up for this fall. And then you can see just the overall work scheduled for the entire project here. So this first phase, we have planned to start this summer and will be wrapping up in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Based on looking at today versus where it will be a couple of years from now, we've also kind of discussed what's next to make sure that you guys are prepared. I know the high school roof is one of the items that has been discussed as the next priority, so planning that out and some additional two thousand six, two thousand seven mechanical items.
So this is the scope that yields the non-milling building dollars of your saving yield?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
So that's where we are at from here. We're pressing for construction. One of the things that our team internally has prepared for is building out just a community engagement plan to educate the public on where we go, so we'll work with y'all's team to begin rolling that out. In the near term, as Todd mentioned at the top, our what we're working on currently is just finalizing the contract agreement for you guys. We were on the phone with Dr. Freeman and Mr. Boone this prior week, so we're just finishing up those items and hope to have that ready for you guys soon.
Dr. Freeman, Dr. Martin, can you speak to funding sources?
Yeah, that's a good question. When we get to the contract point, I want to discuss that with you because you obviously there's a finance mechanism involved to do something like this, and there are a lot of factors, Courtney and I, are considering about this. We do have we do have set aside about four point seven billion from PSCA that would go just to into this project, and essentially would have covered work during this current fiscal year, I think is how we generally said it, which leaves us somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen million to look at. There may be some other smaller amounts that we may be able to contribute, but there's a financing piece of it. And so we're still thinking about how to make that work, and our contract will address our ability to make sure we do it in a timely way, but that's something you're going to need to see because I will need to see it in relation to what our financial analysis looks like and what that's going to be. The whole idea is that you realize operational savings, this equivalent to what your payment pay structure is, and that's the whole idea of how this works.
Yeah, there are a lot, thanks.
Yeah. The reality is that we still have debt on the book, and we have to be aware of that, what that means in terms of our auto credit ratings, et cetera. So those are pieces. We've been discussing, Colin, Todd, and Black for twenty years, it's only a few months, but trying to just be very wise about this. So when you get a contract, I'm going to want you to see the financial piece of this as well and how we how we would be very careful not to overcommit ourselves.